The Highland Park. The call to the order, the November 4th meeting of Highland Park Planning Board. Annual notice of this meeting is provided to the Star Ledger, Home News Tribune, Highland Park Planet on January 29, 2021. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on November 2nd, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on November 2nd, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We have Roger was not available. First of all, Kim was not available this evening, so I am acting in Kim's place. And Roger was not available, and I'm sorry, I wrote down your name earlier and I forgot.
William Hagerty, you can call me Bill.
I can call you.
Bill.
Bill, okay. Bill Hagerty, okay. Okay, and Chris Cosenza is here as our planner. And we have our Borough Engineer here as well, Bruce Scotch, so we are ready to go. First thing on the agenda, October 14, 2021, regular meeting minutes. I was not at that meeting, so I will be abstaining from the vote on those minutes, but I'll be, I'll open the floor to any, any comments, changes, amendments. If I don't hear anyone, I will accept a motion to approve or adopt. By Alan Williams.
Second.
By Patrick. I guess we'll need a roll call.
You could do a voice vote.
I'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
None? So minutes have been approved and adopted. First and only item of business, business tonight is a consistency review of land use ordinance allowing laboratory use within the commercial professional office and light industrial zones. I'm going to let, oh, you know what, Jennifer, I jumped ahead. We never really did. We didn't go through who's here and who's not here.
The roll call?
The roll, actually.
Oops.
Oops, I haven't done this. I haven't, I haven't done the chair on a thing in a while, so sorry about that.
No biggie. Ms. Hammond? Mr. Brusher?
Yeah.
Ms. Hethazy?
Here.
Mr. Hale? Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Kluger?
Here.
Mr. Linares? Mr. Malay?
Here.
Mr. Nolan? Mr. Pearlman?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Okay, so we have seven members this evening. Everyone will be, will be voting. I'll go again. Consistency review, land use ordinance allowing laboratory use within the commercial professional office and light industrial zones. I'm going to let Chris Cosenza, Cosenza give us an overview and some background on this, this change, my understanding. Hagerty, you can chime in as well as far as explaining what our role is with regards to the ordinance, what has happened so far at council. So why don't we stick off with that, Mr. Hagerty?
This is a statutory process under the municipal land use law where ordinances are referred back to the board for what's called the consistency review, and your review is really to comment on whether you determine that the the ordinance would be consistent with the master plan of the borough, and also it affords an opportunity to make any recommendations or comments in regard to the ordinance. You may offer some comments in regard to amendments or changes that you might feel appropriate, but one of the primary issues, of course, is, is it consistent with a master? That's something I'm sure that Mr. Cosenza is going to review with you.
Okay. Very good. Okay, Chris, I'll give you the floor.
All right, thank you. So generally speaking, the, I would characterize the ordinance as sort of a housekeeping, you know, sort of cleaning up the ordinance. And what I mean by that is that we're basically taking definitions or terms that are not really well defined in the ordinance and sort of simplifying it in several zones and making it more consistent with other zones, similar types of uses. This ordinance is split up into, I believe, four sections. One is the commercial zone, which are the areas generally on along the Upper Ariden and Woodbridge Avenue corridors. Laboratories already are permitted, except it's defined as medical and radiologic laboratories, which that in itself is not defined anywhere, but laboratories is. The recommendation there is to simply, you know, simplify it to what is defined by the ordinance, leave it as laboratories. And also in that same section, just provide some sort of parking requirement for it. The ordinance never had a parking requirement for laboratories. It just, this makes it consistent. And we determined that a business type of use was appropriate for that, which is one space for every 300 square feet of floor area. Section two is professional office, that's similar to the light industrial zone in terms of the professional and office uses, so we added the laboratory uses there, and generally the professional office uses are sort of on a periphery of the downtown side streets as well as along Cleveland Avenue. Section three pertains to light industrial zone. There's been some confusion over the years. I remember years ago, we had looked at the light industrial zone when we were first hearing about the girl's school, and we had commented at the time that there's, there's a lot of specific uses, for example, computer assembly services and rentals. It's sort of a very hyper-specific and pragmatically not very usable, and I think from, from an enforcement point of view, it creates a lot of confusion as to why is that hyper-specific? Especially when the intent of the zone is to provide for safe enclosed uses that are compatible. And given that laboratories were things similar to a professional office use, everything's enclosed and certified, we felt that was appropriate to include it in the light industrial zone. And it could be, in my interpretation, that those types of uses probably are permitted today, so what this really does is that this sort of clarifies that, yes, it is, it's no more ambiguity. It makes clear what is permitted in light industrial zone. And in section four, it's more of a renaming, for whatever reason, the stream quarter protection overlay zone, when it was codified, the ordinance was re, it was named as a repeat of the prior section, which was Senior Citizen House, and that just cleans that up in the stream quarter protection overlay zone by title, and also clarifies that laboratories are prohibited in that zone. In terms of the consistency review of the master plan, I think it's quite simple. Bill is referring to NJSA 40:55D26, really to determine if the ordinance is not inconsistent, which is a strange wording, but it's really a simple goal and a land use recommendation from the master plan adopted two years ago that I'll refer to. And the goal is to transform outdated commercial corridors specifically to enrich the mix of uses. And in many cases, this ordinance really clarifies a couple of things. It's not really changing that much in the grand scheme of things. And also with respect to enriching the mix of uses, it specifically mentions Upper Ariden, Woodbridge and Cleveland Avenue corridors. Later in the master plan, it gets more specific with respect to the land use recommendations. And that is amend the zoning ordinance to incorporate new permitted uses and con, and also context-sensitive design standards, including tweaks, improvements and signage that reflects the vision of the downtown and other areas. So with that in mind, and given that the laboratory uses, from my understanding, and is working as a zoning official for almost a decade, very similar to office uses, it cleans and happy certified generally by a state agency or department. Generally clean use, similar to an office use, and we believe that this sort of cleans up the ordinance and allows for a greater range of flexibility and it sort of cleans up the sort of messiness that exists in the ordinance. That's the sort of general overview, so I'll take questions.
Okay, I'll open it up to members of the board if they want to ask any specific questions.
Me?
Okay.
Yeah. When you said that, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear, okay. In my experience, working in, you know, building maintenance labs are far different than offices in terms of their requirements, and I'm just wondering what specifically, you know, I have no objection to labs per se, but they, I mean, it's kind of like somebody else is going to inspect them. I mean, you, you have, usually in labs, you have some sort of fume hoods, some sort of chemicals that have to be exhausted, and you have a certain amount of air exchanges. Somebody else is going to come in and certify that they're doing that? I mean, I don't, or is that something our inspectors do upon, you know, they make the, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're prepared for this type of activity?
Yeah, so I might defer to Scott or Bruce if they can comment on the inspection part, but from my experience, laboratories are certainly generally certified by state agency or departments. It's usually above the local level, but I'd be happy for further input, Mr. Brusher.
Yeah, basically, you're right. That's above us. That's really dealing with the state directly.
Yeah, and they generally have pretty strict standards, and it's also general performance standards in the zoning ordinance, as well as specifically prohibited uses in light industrial zone, for example, that does not allow for like obnoxious use of materials, everything, no storage material out the door. Can't you, can't use radioactive materials, stuff like that. That actually already exists in the ordinance, in, at least in the prohibited section of light industrial zone.
Okay, so it's a limited lab use. It's not laboratories, because that's a, you know, far cry.
I think by function of the fact that there are prohibited uses elsewhere in the ordinance, you could construe that as, it is kind of limited already. But the purpose of the ordinance is just keep it clean and straightforward.
Chris, thank you.
Scott, have you seen, I guess in your experience with other towns using, it seems to be a very general and broad-term laboratories? Or have you seen where that there are, I mean, you just mentioned there may be some other limitations in other places in our ordinance, but at least where it's described as what the permitted use is, do you usually see just the word laboratories? Or something more, you know, some kind of limiting language, or mention some specific laboratory use that's allowed and some that's not allowed?
From, from what I see, it's, it's like Chris said, it's pretty much just a general, you know, laboratory heading. It's not specific.
Well, I'm saying that's what we have here, but I'm saying in other.
Yeah, other towns, I'm saying.
Other towns also that it is, you know, because when I initially had read, had read the, you know, the amended language, and I thought it was more just, you know, expanding the possible uses for laboratories and without really a specific laboratory use that may have been the impetus for, for this change. And then literally an hour ago, I'm listening to the council meeting from the end of October, and, and also some documents, information that was provided by a member of the public. It seems like the change may have been proposed specifically related to cannabis or cannabis testing. And I guess we'd like to hear more about whether that's what the impetus is for this, that's what the change is for? Or is it really just a general change for, you know, to, to expand the type of uses, you know, in the, in these three zones?
Yeah, I, I think I can comment on that. So generally speaking, for years, we've been suggesting we should change the zoning ordinance, just to sort of simplify permitted uses. Generally speaking, really clarify the development procedures and of course the residential form-based code. So, so we sort of went through the master plan process first, right? We want to get really the vision statements and for the, analyze the corridors, and then within the past year or two, we've had several redevelopment plans. And for the, now we're really starting getting to, like, I think we're ready to really start tackling some of these ordinances. So we had the, so the garage accessory use ordinance. I had started looking at fences, walls and hedges. That's sort of on the back burner. I'm looking at it again now. I'm currently working on the form-based code. The laboratories were sprung off of the sort of comment of light industrial zone, like, you know, you should expand the uses. It's, it's kind of wonky the way it's described. And from what I understand, there, there is a cannabis laboratory business that express interest. Whether that specifically related to pushing this forward more, more, you know, prudently and into anywhere we are now, that I can't comment. I'm just sort of just responding to the ordinance, which I thought this needs to be cleaned up and clarified. So to, to that point, that, that may have been sort of like the reminder, hey, we wanted to do this relative to laboratories, but generally speaking, we are actively looking at several ordinances and draft stages to make various amendments, see ordinance, and this is just one of several that you're probably going to see over the next few months.
Yeah, because I wasn't sure, because, you know, Alan, I'm going to get to you in a minute, the, I wasn't sure whether, because the council, I guess, had a, a list of potential cannabis businesses that they, they could have chosen back in August, right? And they, and they chose, I guess, retail and delivery, livery cannabis businesses. And they didn't choose to do, you know, to, to tell the state that we'd be interested in doing others. It could have been manufacturing or, you know, certain, other types of cannabis-related businesses. So I don't know whether, is this something that maybe council should have chosen or, you know, should have come forward in August when, you know, that they potentially wanted to do this? And is this sort of, I'm not saying it's an end around, but is it, is it, you know, is it something that, that's allowed to be done if they didn't, they didn't tell the state back in August that this is what they were interested in? The type of cannabis business that they were interested in?
Yeah, I would say relative to laboratories, that would not have affected, in my opinion, that, that type of business would have been permitted today. But this, again, just cleans up the ordinance with respect to the phrase laboratory. So I don't think it would have really changed the procedure. The timing is odd, isn't it? Okay, but we were considering before we had that August, we had that deadline, we had the workaround relative to the classes of the manufacturer and distribution and sale cannabis, but the testing, for example, of cannabis is completely separate and it's not subject to that, those classes.
So it's not like in the manufacturing, doesn't fall under the manufacturing?
No.
Because I think, because I know that manufacturing is something that Highland Park said we're not going to do. And I think even some towns that said they would, they definitely put it, you know, away from, usually a chosen area that's away from residential, residential uses. So, for example, in the Brunswick, they, they said maybe they would put it in on Jersey Avenue, you know, in the business area, so. Okay, so usually, if we wouldn't have changed, if we hadn't made any change, and we still just had medical and radiologic laboratories, do you think the testing lab that they're talking about would have qualified under, in the, in the C-zone under that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right, Alan?
Yeah. I've seen an open public records act where from the administrator to the president of a analytical testing lab who want, would like to build a cannabis testing laboratory across from the Burn Candy Factory in the, I believe on the third floor of the, that office building. Which, from my point of view, is fine if, if they're essentially quantitating the active ingredients in, in the cannabis. I have a problem with the term laboratory, that I could have a laboratory in the same device where I could be using plutonium or radium or thorium. I, I think the previous designation of it, we received a commercial, medical or radiological would cover that as it is. I think open up to laboratory is just too broad, which is what I also voiced at the Borough Council meeting. But that's my thoughts on it. I guess it is, it is, it would be consistent with the master plan, yes, but I think it's very poor wording.
So, so Alan, the only addition, you would have the word "commercial", right?
In the previous, in the actual.
Right.
This is still draft, what we received from Jennifer. In the original text, it was commercial, medical and radiological in various different places of the ordinance. You know, I think if you said, if you just used the term medical and analytical laboratory, that would cover virtually anything that we would want in the town.
Who else had a comment? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I, I agree with Alan's comments. I just want to ask one thing about the, you know, just the additional of the parking standards. And, you know, I understand the one by three, my son, sorry. Once, he's definitely not, he likes laboratories, one, one square feet. And I'm just, you know, given, given that we'd like to reduce the amount of surface area given to parking, can, can we, you know, can we, can we get a more of a fine-tuned ratio for that in, in, you know, certainly in the Upper Ariden and other parts of where there might, you know, where DOT is looking at up road diet and putting in bike lanes. We really need one in 300 square feet, and I know that's not a master plan consistency or not, but, well, maybe it could be, but I, I just, I just feel like that was, it's just, it just seems like it's, it's, it's an industry standard, and can we move away from industry standard things like that, which end up requiring way too much parking? So Chris, I just have a question to you to think about.
I will say we're definitely thinking about that, and I, I think we'll probably wait to get comments from the parking study as well as any other research that we may need, but I think generally speaking, in a community like Highland Park, the parking standards are antiquated, to say the, say the least. I think you're right, Jeff. So I would definitely recommend, first of all, sort of reorganizing the ordinance and making it more clear what, where you find a parking requirement. Right now it's kind of hidden, tucked away, difficult to find. But I would definitely support really studying and updating the ordinance to really right-size to today's market conditions and the community and the nature of shared parking. Residential parking, obviously, is a different animal, since it's regulated by the state, but so we're sort of dealing with that on a case-by-case basis through redevelopment planning.
Yep, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you said lab, the term laboratory is defined in the code as opposed to the medical and radiological terms?
Yeah.
Where in the code is laboratory defined?
So it's in chapter 230, section three definitions, and it's defined as a structure or rooms equipped for conducting scientific experiments, analysis, examinations, research, testing and/or other experimental and technical work. So when I read that definition a few months ago, it's coming back to June, I thought that that was pretty broad enough. For, for example, in my mind, there's really three types of laboratories, generally speaking. There's research, there's development, and there's testing. And in a way, the definition of laboratory defines all three of them. So it didn't make sense to, for example, have a research laboratory when research is already defined in the laboratory definition. Testing is already part of the analysis section and so on and so forth.
Well, it sounds like the concern is more about expanding it beyond medical and radiological testing, development or research, and opening up to other kinds of laboratories beyond that. And, and I, I agree with your thought process that because medical and radiological are not defined in the code, it gets a little arbitrary, and you could very well believe that other uses such as cannabis research qualifies under medical or maybe radiological for all I know, I don't know. And therefore it's already covered, but it's not clear. So by pulling back those undefined terms and just leaving laboratory, which is a defined term, we're actually clarifying what's already in the code.
Absolutely.
That makes sense, yeah, okay.
Any other questions, comments? If there are none at this time, Jennifer, can we open up? Do we have members of the public and who are looking to speak?
We have one, Karen Ebel Avery. You are unmuted.
Thank you, good evening.
Provide your name and address for the record.
Sure, this is Dr. Karen Ebel Avery. I live at 402 Graham Street in Highland Park. I wanted to go on the record as being a pediatrician who lives in town, who is affiliated with the pediatric group that is at 317 Cleveland Avenue. And considering that that is a place that children and families are coming and going, well, children, babies, newborns, sick kids, kids with asthma, I would like to go on the record to express my displeasure that having a cannabis testing facility would be considered for that location. Thank you.
Chris, before, before we move on, Chris, there was a comment at the council meeting. I think an attorney had come on the call and, and questioned whether it was legal to have a cannabis testing facility without, within a thousand feet of a school. I don't know, or, or Bill, I don't know if you rings any bells with you, any thoughts?
It does, it does. I used to prosecute for decades, actually. And it certainly would appear that that would be contrary to law to have a testing facility where the substance would be there. There's significant state oversight, and I'm thinking about the recent kind of opt-in and opt-out and how this would would interface with that. It seems like a, I, I have a problem with a testing lab for marijuana under that, and also I think it would be certainly subject to the regulations in terms of separation from schools.
Right, but to the point, this amendment wouldn't overrule any of those other laws that a lab would have to comply with, right? So us just changing the terms to say this laboratory uses are permitted doesn't undo or overrule restrictions related to school proximity and what occurs in proximity to a school, right?
We can't override the, I guess, regulations and statutes now.
So our action tonight isn't going to create that controversy. The laws that overrule and govern distance from school will prohibit that usage.
Right.
Good, so we're covered.
We're covered, but I think that probably will or should be in part of our comments back to council on, on the, well, I guess you could ask, is it, is it, can we still find something is consistent with the master plan if we believe, if we have been, I would say we believe, but if our professional is telling us that it may not be legal under a state or federal statute, can we still say that it is consistent with our master plan?
Well, I like to think that the fight between the government might be a bit above the Highland Park Planning Board's.
Just throwing that out.
Do we know whether it is within a thousand feet of a school?
Well, I, I guess my first question was, does a private school count as that? And my assumption would be yes, and there will be a girl's school directly down the street. So that, if, if that is such the case, and I think it might be worth having our council sort of brief a memo to the Borough Councils to extrapolate that and explain it, because it seems like there are questions from the public who want that answer. So I, I think it's, we should probably do the service and do that research and provide that information to the Borough Council as they adopt this ordinance. Just to clarify that, this is not, for example, approving or authorizing a cannabis testing lab specifically. This is mainly to clean up the ordinance with respect to the definition related to the word laboratory.
With certain laws, they, they don't want a sick, a bar within, say, a thousand feet of a of a church or synagogue or a school. But this is not distributing a product of any kind. It's analyzing something and data goes back to some manufacturer saying it passes or fails.
Yep, that's my understanding. As far as the scientific analysis process, in some cases they're destroyed.
Ms. Hethazy?
I think it would behoove the council to educate the public of what marijuana testing labs actually do. Because if the concern is, you know, children were Because if the concern is, you know, children with asthma, I don't think the testing labs are smoking pot. If it's, no, I mean, I'm not trying to be funny. I'm being serious. Like, I think that that needs to be, I think that needs to be clarified. And I think that it would behoove the council to give the public a bit more education about this. Because, you know, everyone does their own research, but we as the public should know what, what does, what is a marijuana testing lab do? What does that consist of? And I think that would be helpful to the community as a whole to have all of that information.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because I think we were almost, almost breaking this, our role tonight into two. You know, one, one is, you know, the consistency review on the, you know, just the language, using a language laboratory. And then there's commenting back on if your, the council's intention is to move forward with a marijuana testing facility in one of these zones, here are things that we will want to make sure, you know, council is considering and doing. That's the way I've been looking at it. Then, you know, if, if anyone else agrees, disagrees, that's, you know, happy to hear from others.
We have another hand raised.
Okay.
And Bo Tien. Please state your name and address.
Yeah. Hi, Mary Bo Tien, 709 Madison Ave. And I just wanted to mention, no, first to answer Alan's question in which he said, you know, has this issue of the laboratory suddenly come up because a weed lab wants to come in? Yes, that's why. And that has nothing to do with the August deadline. The, the S21 legislation was specifically dealing with only those six classes identified in S21. Nothing to do with testing laboratories. So they did not have to address that at the time. So if you think the labs are coming up now in an odd way, that's true. Because there are, there's interest from an individual in Highland Park who wants to get into 317 on the third floor. And the town is very aware of that. They made the referral. This is a very less than transparent way of them trying to get a weed lab into 317. You need to be aware of that. The other thing is, you know, to address the fact that Mr. Rogers was absolutely right on, Mr. Thomas, rather, was right on target, saying that any marijuana cannot be within a thousand feet. That is federal law. So this idea of educating the public on, you know, what it is, that's fine, but that doesn't change federal law. You need to understand that a marijuana testing lab cannot be within a thousand feet of that proposed girl's school. And if you want to be, you know, stick to other issues in terms of, you know, consistency with the master plan, there are several instances in which regardless of federal law prohibiting it, this, this notion of a marijuana lab there is not consistent whatsoever. There was an open house hell, there were online surveys hell. And in fact, many residents said in those circumstances, they did not want any marijuana facilities on Cleveland Avenue. That was in the survey, that was on those post-it notes, that was all captured in the master plan. So, you know, to ignore all that is certainly not consistent with asking the public, what do they think? There was a map setup of the Cleveland Corridor. People posted on it. People wrote online survey, no marijuana facilities on Cleveland Ave corridor. Another issue related specifically to consistency. One of the, one of the phrases in our master plan reads that "appropriate planning response is to comprehensively review and amend regulations that better reflect and protect the borough's existing and established neighborhoods and character of residential areas in a socially positive way." Well, you know, as you're aware, there's 150 residents who oppose marijuana entities in this town, including specifically in the Cleveland Corridor. We do not see that as a socially positive way of enhancing the character of our residential areas. And that needs to be taken seriously. That's part of the language in what is consistent. Another thing in the master plan, page 14, it says that we are supposed to be, the master plan, okay, is supposed to be protecting the borough's natural resources, overall health and welfare of the community. Again, marijuana entities, including testing laboratories, okay? The, the whole industry puts it at a severe drain on natural resources. You have received information to that effect. It's disastrous on the soil. It's disastrous on wildlife. It's disastrous on toxicity to humans that get in the chain. Fish, water, all of this is devastated by the marijuana industry. So, you know, let's not be hypocrites here. Let's follow the master plan's own language. And the prohibition of marijuana entities, you know, throughout Highland Park, frankly, and specifically if we're addressing the Cleveland Corridor for a laboratory, this is what we are talking about. The other thing is, you know, there are in fact environmental problems that can come out from any, any kind of laboratory. You say noxious fumes are not allowed. You say that, you know, radioactive materials are not allowed. First of all, I don't know where those things appear. If you can tell us at the end of my comment section, that'd be great. But, you know, when you're bringing marijuana into and out of a facility, there are lots of issues related to environmental problems. All right? There is hazardous waste management. There are venting systems required. This is not to be taken lightly and just say, oh, well, we're cleaning up the lab language. This is serious. And there is a lot at stake here. And the council, in fact, is trying to take a back doorway into getting this weed lab above a pediatrician's office within, within 500 feet of a proposed girl's school, which is absolutely not allowed. And putting this into a residential use area where we have a lot of property values at stake. This is not to be taken lightly. So again, I urge you to, if you have more questions about this, I urge you to contact the attorney that you referenced, Mr. Kluger, on that call. I'm sure he can be reached. He's an expert in these matters. And as far as tonight goes, there are so many loose ends on this. We would strongly recommend that you vote no, it is not consistent with the master plan in many ways. And the ordinance should certainly specifically exclude any type of marijuana entity within a thousand feet of any type of a school. That is federal law. So what you're seeing in front of you now on this ordinance is completely insufficient. Thank you so much. And if you could tell us where the current prohibited uses are, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jennifer, any further members of the public?
No.
Okay, Matt. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion of this part of the meeting. Mr. Hagerty, I mean, my, I obviously understand the severity of some of the issues that the last member of the public has spoken about, but my initial thought is some of those may be beyond our scope and more within councils, councils domain as opposed to ours.
Our domain is a consistency review, whether we feel it is consistent or a double negative, that it is not inconsistent is actually how the statute reads. It's a double negative. But I usually just defer to it is consistent because it's a little easier to wrap your head around, I suppose. But the finding is that it's not inconsistent.
But one, one thing I, I will agree with member of the public and, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Hale was not here. He was actually, he's flying back and was not able to be on the call. I, I myself personally was very disappointed in, with council in terms of the lack of openness and transparency about the cannabis, you know, the potential for this being for a cannabis business who's looking to come into town. I mean, obviously some people knew, some people didn't know. I know Ms. Hammond didn't know. I didn't know. And this sort of came up at the end. And if that's, that's really what is, I won't say driving this, but at least is an important part of it. It's something that should have been discussed with us and put for, you know, put forth in front of us, you know, to have a more open and transparent discussion about it and for the public as well. So that's just sort of my general feeling on, on, on that piece of it. It doesn't change, you know, maybe what the outcome is going to be, but at least I think that's just another comment. At least I will have, you know, I would like to make part of our resolution or comments back to council about sort of the lack of openness and transparency about what is, what is or what isn't really going on here in terms of, you know, what council is, is, is aiming to do.
I, I, I just want to comment, I, I don't disagree about the transparency issues and the discussions about the marijuana dispensary. It's a very hot topic. There are people who feel passionately on both sides. I know we've only heard from one side, but I, I know there are many who actually are very supportive of it, supportive, who don't have an issue with any of these things. When I look at what I'm being asked to look at tonight, it's whether we should clean up our zoning language to match an actual defined section. Now, I think under, as it's currently written, for medical and radiological laboratory researches, someone who is truly committed to having a pot lab of some kind is going to find themselves trying to qualify under that language anyway. I don't think this consistency review is going to make that determination. So yeah, council should have full and open discussions and education to the public about medical marijuana and pot usage and all of that. I just think it's a red herring as far as the discussion tonight when it comes to cleaning up this language from undefined terms to defined terms. And I don't want to lose sight of that or be accused of suddenly having a strong position on this one way or the other in controversy without full facts when I'm being asked a very specific thing that is not, yes, we should allow pot in town, no, we should not allow pot in town. I'm being asked, should we clean up this language to, in a way that's definable? And to me, that's, that, that's what I'm voting on tonight. I'm not voting on whether or not I want a pot dispensary within a thousand feet of the girl's school and how that affects federal law versus state law. So.
No, I, I agree with you. And I think we sort of said the same thing when we were asked to, to, so give our consistency review back in August when, when council needed to, to put into the state, but they were interested in, in two levels of, of the cannabis business. So we were in the same, same position there. It's just that in this case, having watched the council meeting where they pretty much just read the, the proposed changes to the ordinance into the record with no discussion whatsoever about it, I, I was like, oh, okay.
But that doesn't change.
No, no, I, I don't disagree. I, I'm not disagreeing with you either. But it's just, you know, maybe, you know, maybe I'm doing this long enough. I shouldn't have been surprised, but it's, it just keeps happening. So, and so that's, that's who we are. So, someone else? Alan?
Maybe we need to redefine the term laboratory in the initial definition. I mean, is a, you, you, you wouldn't want a whole lot of, say, organic synthesis, which would be covered under, under laboratories currently defined at 317 either, 317 Cleveland either. I, I think it's, again, I think it's, it's just too broad and you're giving away control that you, you don't need to give away.
Yeah. And I think that may be one of our comments, we, you know, we have consensus and agreement among the board that we'd like, the council should consider some more limiting language, especially given the fact that, you know, both in the, in the commercial zone, in certain areas of the commercial zone, the ally zone, and the professional office zone are very close to residential uses and educational uses and students and doctors' offices. And that's something that council should take into account in maybe considering some additional limiting language in the ordinance.
And we also could carry this to next till we get some feedback from the borough, from the council.
No, no, we have a statutory timeframe within which we're supposed to respond and react. So we don't have a luxury of time.
No, no, because I, I think, I think November 9th next week is their meeting when they're going to do their, their second reading and, and at that point, they could decide if they want, but we, you know, to postpone, but we would have to provide our comments. You know, they're expecting it after this meeting. Patrick?
Yeah, I agree with Rebecca. We should deal with the matter in hand because this may be about a marijuana lab. Most likely it is. The council is always desperate to get any new business, any new and different thing, anything into town. So they often bend over backwards to get business into town. But we don't know, but this lab will, this ordinance, if, but again, I also agree with Alan that we should really find, that I'd like to see it more fine tuned. So the laboratories that will be approved would be of a limited scope. Because, you know, by not approving this, we prevent another type of lab from moving in that would be good. And, you know, I don't like it when planning boards, which has happened before, knock down a proposal because they don't like the end user moving into town, even though the end user is an approved use. So I think we should skip to the, the, forget about marijuana because this isn't about marijuana. This is, what's before us is the law. And either it does or it doesn't. And, you know, people have had a chance to vote. They could have voted out the council members. They could have done a lot of things. Our job is to look at the law and see whether it's consistent. That's it. That's my opinion.
Agreed. And I'm sure you're not talking about this planning board, so.
Well, I remember our little, yes.
I didn't ask for specific. I didn't ask for specific.
It's, sorry, this, so it sounds like to me, if we took an accident saying that the ordinance, you know, is not inconsistent. If the following things are done, we could do that too, right? Like we've done with other ordinances. So we could, right, we could do that. We could stipulate that, right? Bill?
Yes, you can have your recommendations, certainly.
Okay, okay. So tightening the language could be one recommendation that comes out of this.
I don't know that we, I don't know that, I know we've done it in the past, but I'm not, not sure on this one that we have very, you know, specific language that unless others want to speak up, that specific language or certain things that we definitely want to see. And or is it more of just, we want council to consider more limiting language and taking into account, you know, where, where the uses are, what the uses are going to be as opposed to coming up with, you know, you know, really, you know, redlining their document.
I think it might be easier for council to come up with what they don't want to see because sometimes, sometimes just putting in the exclusions of the things that you don't want to see used in, used for the, in a laboratory might be easier than just sort of pigeonholing what they want it used for. Either way, it's tightening up the language.
Right. Anyone else?
I personally don't feel educated enough on various laboratory types to make that recommendation at this moment. But I'm totally on board with the concept of buyer beware. If you're approving this laboratory, you haven't met all the hurdles that you've got coming if this is about having a marijuana laboratory.
We would remind the governing body that any proposed user must be cautioned about compliance with state, federal regulations, that kind of thing. You know, which is always the case, but it never hurts to emphasize that.
Does anyone else have any other comments? Otherwise I am open to, to a motion. Anyone wants to jump in?
I'll make the motion to say that the ordinance is not inconsistent with master plan.
Okay. Well, I'm going to add, add to that. So we'll say, we're saying that it is not inconsistent. However, we do make sure that, that council is aware of state and federal regulations regarding the, the ability of, of certain types of laboratories to be in the proximity of, of schools or educational uses. Council should be also mindful of proximity to residential and, and medical uses. And that council should endeavor to do a better job of being open and transparent about important issues to members of, of the town.
I wish Matt were here.
And the planning boards.
And the planning board as well. So it would have been easier if Matt was here, then I have someone to yell at. But but I think that's, I think we've covered, just going back through my notes, that we've covered everything that that we needed to.
Mr. Chair, I'll I'll indicate that we would recommend that in the future there be improved communication from the governing body in terms of updating and keeping the board advised in regard to, okay.
And educating the public as well on on important issues related to that may or may not be, you know, that may be related to to a proposed ordinance change.
All they need to do is raise taxes and hire more staff. Pretty much. It all comes, a lot of it comes down to everyone stretched really thin. We just gave Matt an earful at the Democratic Committee about the taking down the tables without any notice and they dropped the ball. And, you know, it's 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 a difficult thing to get job done and then communicate at the same time. So it's it's, if anybody has any ideas of how they could improve communication, that would be a good thing. But I know it's been a problem since, you know, since we started.
I agree with you 100%, and I would not trade jobs with anybody on council and certainly not the mayor. But at the other hand, you could pick up a phone, you can, you can text, you can call.
No argument, just.
At the council meeting.
For as long as I can remember.
Well, all they had to do is say a couple of words at the council meeting to give people an idea of, you know, of what what's being contemplated. And yes, it's a proposed transaction. You don't know for sure that it's going to come through. But but this one was just a little, a little too obvious of what was going on. So uh, so I I think a little patient would have, would have helped.
As a chair, I can comment on the town tables and future ordinance. Let me finish, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I was gonna get to that as well. Okay, so we got a roll call, please?
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Ms. Hatazi?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, we have unanimous vote and the consistency review is has been performed and we will get our consistency review memo out to council as soon as possible, certainly before their meeting next week, if possible, we'll talk with Roger and at least get them, if not the actual documents signed, sealed and delivered, but at least the general tone and information that we wanted to get across the council. Next item is not on the on the agenda that we'll talk about is the town tables, as long as that was brought up. I just want to make sure everyone is aware of, if they hadn't seen it, they're seeing it on social media or seen it in person at the town tables on South Third and North Fourth were removed based because of DOT rules, but I'll let Chris give more information on that.
Yes, I spoke to Councilman Hale a couple of days ago. First of all, he's really sorry. He really wanted to be here, but was, you know, I think a lot of us were caught off guard by the change in date. Myself included, I had to drive 100 miles to get home. So what he relayed to me was that at this time, the borough is pursuing permanent closure of South Third and North Fourth. And that involves, you know, coordination with AJ DOT, involves traffic stays, which the town is undergoing. I'm sure Bruce has got his hands full with that. So we hope that process will lead to, you know, both portions being permanently closed. If you guys have any comments, I'd be happy to relay that to the council. Otherwise, as you know, we were able to temporarily close those streets through the governor's executive order, which expired November 1st. And a lot of communities are grappling with that. I don't touch him. They closed, they had new street closed down one way that had to open up. I think New Brunswick George Street sort of doing, dealing with the same thing, Princeton's where this room street in a similar situation where they're seeking a permanent closure and sort of, actually, I think they're redesigning or seeking redesign with this one. So while that has expired and the basically the tables have to be set back a different distance, which I believe instead of 50 feet to 100 feet, that's sort of crimps down what you can do within that sort of area footprint. I think the reason you saw the tables removed altogether, which I did see a couple of days ago when I was in town, Mr. Councilman Hale did indicate that P S N G is looking to do some work that had been delayed. I'm, it's not clear to me, I apologize, if the tables will be back there temporarily on a temporary use permit. It's certainly possible they will pursue that, but the advice given was that the borough should focus on a permanent closure, which obviously takes time. So the permanent closure as opposed to continually renewing temporary use permits three months at a time, so that's their pool. So the the town is working on bringing it back permanently. And that's the sort of comment I have for now. And so if there's anything that you would like me to relay back to council, I'd be happy to share that along with Jennifer.
Yeah, one one comment I had on it, I was, obviously, we, you know, we we knew and we had talked about doing the studies for South Third and the permanent closure of South Third. I I was a little surprised by the permanent closure of North Fourth. Obviously, I've I have enjoyed it. I've taken advantage of it, you know, but I I thought that was going to be more of a a COVID COVID item and the fact that it's only half the street and not the whole street. And there is a little bit of a sort of private benefit to Pino's there. I thought that that was going to to end and that we were really focusing on on South Third as opposed to doing North Fourth permanent as well.
Yeah, I have a, just just Chris, a clarification, the borough is pursuing full closure of of South Third where the tables were and partial closure on North Fourth. Right? In other words, reestablishing the tables that were along Pino's and and the sushi place. Is that correct?
So I'm sorry, I don't have the exact answer for you. So I'll clarify that and I could bring that back to you.
I I do say this because the communication from the borough has been only on North, only on South Third and has not mentioned North Fourth at all. And so I guess the question is, if if a traffic study is including both of them, then one presumed, then that's that's part of an application to DOT. I mean, you know, I'm not going to swear myself in as a as a planning, as a transportation planning expert, though I do it for a living. But I I a question I have, bring back to Matt, to Matt Hale and council is understanding the 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 request and to DOT for a street closure, a local, a local street that abuts a state highway has to be done by the borough and approved by the commission. That's in, that's in the access management code of DOT. There is nothing else about the process other than a town has to apply and approval given by the commissioner. Opening a driveway has lots of standards to it, has a process. There's no process to this. And it sounds like to me, the borough is taking on an a black box type of approach where it's completely up to DOT officials decide if they want to do it and if they don't want to do it. And there is no, there is no steps by which one can guarantee. Now, there's no guarantees in life, but there's, unlike when you get a permit to open up a driveway for a business, DOT has a process for that. And if you fill the steps, you get the 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 access. There's no such process exists. And so are we left to the political machinations and political influences? Or do we have a process written down? I'd like to see a process written down. Okay. And so that's the first thing. I want to separate the two between the 100 foot setback, which was codified into public law this year. Separate from the temporary closures, which, as you said, Chris, on an ongoing basis, is I I understand the borough did not file for a continued closure. And so DOT said, well, you didn't file for in time or whatever for temporary closure. So now you're not going to get your temporary closure and focus on a permanent closure. I, that's separate from the 100 foot setback. Those are separate things. And I think it's need to be clear about those. And then, you know, so I I want to make sure that I don't feel like, I think Alan's point earlier on the cannabis ordinance, the on the, the, on the, on the laboratory is that we're not getting clear communication timely. And I want to say, I want to convey that to the councils.
Alan? Yes. Just real quick question, how do these town tables relate to this planning board right now?
It doesn't.
So can we like go on to something else then?
I understand that. We, I thought it was important for members of the board just to hear about something that is important in town. And it is something this, this venue is a way for us, sometimes for us to communicate with council if if Matt was here, we'd be communicating with him, with generally.
But but there's no, there's no facts right now. When facts come out of how they're going to handle it, like Jeff was asking, then that'll be the appropriate time, I think.
He's entitled to, he's entitled to make his communication. We're probably spending more time talking about whether we should be talking about it than 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 needs to, because I was about to move on. So it's really not, you know, not necessary to, you know, to get into this at this point. But I do feel that, you know, the the planning board over the years has felt that we should talk about what's going on in town and be knowledgeable about what's going on in town. So this is, this is something that we're talking about. And also because South Third and North Fourth is something that we spent a lot of time talking about as part of, you know, redevelopment and things that have come before this board. So I also brought it up because the fact that, you know, the the issue of, you know, that North Fourth is now being considered for a permanent closure is something that, I don't, as I think Jeff said, that said it also, we hadn't heard that before. So that's why I just was raising the question and something, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but just something that Chris can go back to 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 the mayor and to council and and come back to us at the next meeting or or beforehand and communicate back to us. Anything else? Scott, do you have any zoning building report, anything?
No, we have, we actually been pretty slow the past month.
Okay. Kim is not here for rehabilitation screening committee. I don't know if, Chris, you know anything about anything going on?
So to the redevelopment council entities are authorized the development of two redevelopment plans related to preparation of it. So we're in beginning stages, really organizing for two areas. One is along North Raritan Avenue between South 10th, crossing over South 11th to Maryland on the face fronting on North Raritan, as well as the area along Cleveland Avenue. I might be best for me to characterize it as all sort of unbuilt untouched properties other than American properties, a girl's school and the seven lot subdivision that you saw a couple of months ago. So we're really looking at the Cleveland Avenue, Cleveland Avenue as a whole to sort of deal with what's coming in, what should we do, what's appropriate. So we're trying to take it to opportunity now to see what development is appropriate there and what zoning is appropriate there, given it's been so much change over the last, you know, five or 10 years. So we're in the beginning stage of those redevelopment plans, or if I take a few months and we're certainly be in, I'll get you up to speed on where we are before we have introductions.
Chris, what's the timing on that?
I typically, if I want a redevelopment plan, in my, in my mind, it usually takes about three to four months to do a simple redevelopment plan. Obviously, with the downtown is a different animal that took well over a year. These are, I think the North Raritan would be simpler to do. It's very straightforward. Cleveland Avenue may take longer, given the type of stakeholder input we want to achieve. That's sort of what we're starting next week is sort of talk about the overall timing. So once I get more information, I'll be happy to share it with you. We're very, very early in the process.
Okay, anything else anyone on the board would like to bring before us tonight?
Scott, I was just curious, how far away is the River Road Apartments from being ready for tenants?
I would probably say about inside, probably about two and a half months.
Yes, far along.
They're moving along. They're moving along pretty good.
Yeah, I spoke to the general contractor. They are on top of the affordable housing requirements. So please, they are, they're on top of them.
Have they advertised the rentals at this point?
That I'm not sure, but I just advise them, if you haven't done it already, really need to coordinate with the affordable housing consultant to get the marketing plan ready. It sounds like they've started that.
The market rate apartments are already being advertised for.
Alan?
Question for Bruce. How is the compliance on 230, yeah, 238 Cleveland?
Oh, it depends who's asking.
Okay.
So I finished it, Alan. It's in type. I will proof it and release it. Generally speaking, Menlo has done a pretty good job with the basic details that needed to be addressed via my report as well as the resolution. Probably half my report speaks to the environmental issues. I've outlined all the documents that were submitted. I've addressed the issues that I see with various documents and I've created a summary statement, which essentially says that there has to be a document created under the signature of one LSRP. All those other documents that they are referring to can be included in it, but that it must all be combined into one document that, once approved, can be on file at the clerk's office. So if anybody's buying a home there, whatever it is, is transparent. I've listed the various concerns that I know, spoke with our LSRP about a couple of issues. I don't think I should get too deep into it because they're not before us. So I think that I should just kind of give you a general overview. If it is not released tomorrow, Alan, it will be on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
But I went through all the reports again and your memo and Alan's emails and stuff, just to kind of, you know, refresh my memory, although I thought it was pretty clear on it all. And I'm pretty comfortable with what I'll be issuing. I'm very comfortable with it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking, Alan.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just add on to that. I know I'm a small part of residential compliance, but I bless the more or less their architectural plans and try to ensure variety, make sure there's no repeat homes. I'm sorry to really get into the details and I should have a report completed by Monday or Tuesday as well. But a lot of landscaping I'll be deferring to as each individual lot comes in and I'm looking to get Sacks input as well. And I'm coordinating with Sack as we speak.
And and Chris, I do defer to you relative to the variances, but also put a comment in there for the subdivision plat that not sure if the setbacks are what are shown, that are shown are relative to the ordinance or the adjustment that was made, but we did indicate that we wanted to see that adjustment. And so I did put a comment in there, deferring to you relative to them, alrighty?
Yeah, I remember there was a comment raised by the board, I think Ms. Hand raised it up. Individual lots surveys of plot plans and finals as well surveys should show the setback lines that are adjusted as a result of the board pool. That way, new homeowners, when they buy the property, they understand what they can or can't do. So.
And the final map is really where it should be shown. I mean, nothing wrong with it being on the surveys, but the final map is the document that will create the lots.
Yeah.
And it is shown, setbacks are shown on it. I would just ask, did you look at that and see that that envelope is not larger than what we had discussed with it all generally just shifting forward a a distance rather than increasing the buildable lot area.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, then, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'll try to be brief. I'm sorry. So with respect to the ordinances, I think, as you know, the process is sort of I'm not gonna, I don't want to say backwards, but the planning board is caught in this role where they're just reviewing for consistency, right? So the Borough Council will introduce an ordinance. You only have one bite at the apple and that's just to make comments within 35 days and then it's taken over by council again. With that in mind, and in order to really, really to the comment to improve communication is to and be transparent is relative to the residential form base code, as I spoke last time. My intention is to make a presentation to this body to sort of discuss what our plan is before we get to an introduction. I like to, I I think that might be something we should consider doing going forward. Obviously, any ordinance affects land use. We might be proactive with the board to understand what we're planning to do before. what we're planning to do before it, the governing body takes action to introduce. So hopefully that, hopefully that's the start of a new era of transparency.
There's a guy who's listening to us and then. No, I think that, I think that would be great. I mean, you know, and, uh, as long as that's allowed under the law and, uh, he said, give us another bite at the apple and, uh, and, and not just be in consistency review mode. So that would be.
Yeah, it will delay the process generally, but I, I think it's worth it on this one. For sure. Uh, we'll, we'll see going forward.
Very good. Jen, I think we're supposed to open up to public comment and any item not on the agenda. So I don't know if there's anyone else, uh, who wants to speak from the members of the public?
No one's got their hands raised.
Okay.
Before, um, there, sorry, um, there, I remember Ms. Paton had asked a question.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, she, she had asked a question where the prohibited uses were. Uh, I did just look it up while we were chatting. These are specific prohibited uses within the light industrial zone. It's chapter two hundred and thirty, section one forty-three subsection F, as in Frank.
So would they only apply in light industrial and would not apply technically to commercial or PO?
This subsection F, uh, rolling pertains to light industrial zone. Um, I'll do more research if there's other prohibited uses. Um, I should know this off the top of my head, um, but I'll get back to Jennifer and she can relay it to Mary.
We just, if it, if it doesn't, and somehow that's sort of like, um, you know, something we want to tell council as well, this is part of a cleanup that whatever limitations may apply in light industrial, the laboratory you should apply in others as well. So that just may be something to add on to our, to our comments back, uh, back to council. If it turns out that, that there's like, the falls through the cracks there.
Alan, did you close public session yet or public comment yet?
I was starting to and and then someone want to speak, I see a hand. So we will not be, I, if I did, I'm reopening. And if I didn't, it's open to, to Mary.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much, Alan. Yeah, Chris, I'm sorry. Can you just repeat where that prohibition appears? And the second thing I want to say, um, given again that you have knowledge, there's so much confusion and this is not straightforward. There's a lot of back and forth thing that really should take place with council. The fact that you only have it once, uh, really is a, not a good system. I totally agree with you. Is there a way you could also suggest to council, you know, there's no requirement that on November ninth that they bring this ordinance up again. You know, they have plenty of time that they can go and make the appropriate changes. There's not a rush between now and Tuesday. That's just because they happen to put it on their agenda for that day. They're trying to rush it through. So, you know, if you had thirty five days, that's fine, but they don't. They can bring this up again whenever they want. So, you know, I think that's also important to note. They don't have to do it for Tuesday.
I believe they're aware that has happened in the past. Well, we, we have sent back communications and, and they have, did not move, move forward right away with, uh, speaking, reading and adoption. So they're aware of that. And, uh, again, we, we don't have control over what they do or don't do, but
Right, right.
They, they are aware. They are.
Okay, great. Uh, I'm sorry. Then, Chris, could you just please repeat where those prohibitions that, that you say occur? And again, this is really important for everybody to look at this more carefully. There's so much here to be considered. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, it's chapter two thirty, which is land development. It's section one forty-three light industrial zone subsection F, as in Frank. That lists the specific prohibited uses within a light industrial zone. And I'll do more research to see if there's a general prohibition in all zones.
Right, because I think it's important to realize, right, if it's just saying the light industrial zone, that really does need to be addressed. What about all the other zones, obviously? Yeah.
We're definitely going to be checking that, so.
Thank you so much. Yeah, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, I will close the public portion and entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion.
Lira has her hand up.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to have my hand up.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved seconded. We are adjourned and we'll see you all in December.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. Happy holidays coming up.
Good night.
Good night.